We have to start off with three petitions tonight which will be continued. I'll read the first one into the record. To hear the petition of Southeast Regional Network who will lease to High Point Treatment Center, Inc. to renovate the former St. Luke's Hospital for 72-bed psychiatric hospital and outpatient clinic with 200 employees over three shifts. The grounds will maintain present parking and pool planting in a small gazebo. Subject property is located at 52 Oak Street, Middleborough Assessors map 50N and 50J and lot 5216. Declare the hearing open. This is a continuance of a hearing originally started on August 22nd, 2013. The hearing will be continued until, what's the date? January 23rd? Until January 23rd. Is there a motion to do that?
Seconded.
Motion made in second to continue it to that date. Dr. Braun?
In favor.
Mrs. Peltzer?
In favor.
Mr. De Gea. Mr. Freitas?
No. Darren.
And Darren, Mr. De Gea. Yeah, De Gea.
De Grazia. In favor, yes.
Okay. Five to nothing. Continue it.
No, he didn't. That's all right.
Liz is on that petition too.
He wasn't listed on my list.
I know, I haven't been here that long.
That's why. Okay, the next one is to continue the 40B project, proposed 40B project for Spruce Street until January 23rd. Any discussion on that one with the board?
Motion to continue?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. De Grazia?
In favor.
Mr. De Gea.
In favor.
Italian names. Sorry, every time.
Five to nothing. Continue it to that date. Next one is to hear the petition of Peter Freeman for Robert Estates LLC relative to his request to allow for the construction of 12 single-family dwellings pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 40B. Subject property is located at 711 Plymouth Street, Middleborough Assessors map 44 lot 669 in the residence rural district. Is there a motion to continue this one as well until the 23rd of?
Seconded.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Jim?
Yes?
May I address you just briefly on this? It's come to our attention and information that there are significant attachments with respect to the property.
Excuse me? Could you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Robert Kraus on behalf of the Freitas family. Kraus &amp; Hummel LLP, Plymouth, Massachusetts Attorney for the family and the abudders, direct abudders to the subject property. It's come to our attention that the proponents have significant attachments, including the property that's the subject matter of this 40B, to the tune of over a million dollars, which normally affects this property but their viability going forward, to be financially competent to undergo the proposed development. I'll be writing to you in the next couple of days asking that you take that into consideration. And in fact, prior to reconvening the next hearing, I'd ask that you entertain a hearing with respect to whether jurisdictionally you should continue the hearing until those financial matters are resolved or addressed. And I'll address this to Counsel Witten as well. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion made, seconded to continue it to the 23rd of January. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, the only discussion I would add to that conversation is I'd be interested in what Attorney Witten has to say on whether that would impact the comprehensive permit process as it stands. I know mass housing is pretty lenient as far as jurisdictional issues go. And so I'm not sure if we have the ability to put the stop to that if not.
We'll communicate.
Okay. That'd be my only comment on that. Other than that, I'm in favor of continuing this hearing until January 23rd.
No more?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor votes five to nothing to continue it until the 23rd. That takes care of the three that are going to be continued. Thanks.
That cleared the house.
Let's go home. Not yet.
For the few people that are left. To hear the petition of Elizabeth Ratauski on behalf of a New England Singular Wireless relative to her request to allow for the instruction, allow for the installation of 12 antennas, equipment generator, and shelter to the existing wireless communications tower. Subject property is located at 125 Bedford Street, Middleborough Assessors map 029 lot 4186. Declare the hearing open. Floor is yours.
Thank you. As you said, my name's Elizabeth Ratauski and I work for Tiara or an agent for New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which is a distributor for two AT&amp;T. At this point in time, we're seeking a special permit to allow installation of wireless communication equipment on the existing tower located at 125 Bedford Street. AT&amp;T, along with the other carriers, are currently expanding their network, trying to allow for, cover the coverage gap areas. As you can see on attachment five of the application submitted, there is a significant area that we need to cover. The white area is what we're trying to cover. And then as you see on the second page, with installation of this equipment, we'll significantly cover that coverage, I'm sorry, we'll cover that gap area. We are trying, we are proposing to install 12 antennas as well as associated equipment, remote radio headster directors, what have you there ancillary to just help be covered with antennas. And that's at a height of 120 feet. We're also proposing to place an 11-by-20 concrete pad in the ground, on the ground area inside the existing compound for placement of an equipment shelter as well as a generator. We obviously chose this location because of an existing tower as opposed to building a new tower.
That's it?
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
I haven't made it all the way through pile of favors yet, but there is an existing pad in this site. This is my first tower, so I remember.
Okay.
So you're putting on an additional pad?
There's an existing pad? Well, there are multiple pads already existing, so where they're going to place their shelter is in a lay, a concrete pad.
That's within the compound, we're saying now?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Right, we're not going to go outside the compound area.
Could you have a question?
Could you explain to me what the purpose of the generator is?
The generator is actually going to be mandated by the FCC eventually after purge to Katrina with all the power outages. The generator, it works as a backup power source, so people still have communications in time of emergency.
I mean, board members might correct me, I don't ever remember a tower having a generator.
I believe the one on, next to?
Did we?
I think one of them did have.
What kind of?
The cable company has one.
Yeah, they're all coming.
Now, so this generator is only going to be operated in times when electricity is out, period?
Correct. Only when there's no electric, there's no power.
Okay.
It's for emergency backup only.
And that's going to be written into the permit? Exactly like that?
Anybody else on the board have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? If not, go ahead.
Through you to the petitioner. How close is the nearest residence to this tower? Do you have any idea? I know there's a house on the corner, I'm just curious.
Generators can be nice.
Are you referring to right up at the top, map 29?
Yeah, I believe so. Is that?
The compound edge is, what was the name I should say? It looks like a 10 feet, I'm sorry, 25 feet from the property.
Forty lies, yep. Okay, so they're pretty close, don't they?
Anybody else have any questions?
There's a letter from the conservation agent.
Want to read it?
Yeah. To the zoning board of appeals from Petition Cassidy Conservation Agent, December 17. After reviewing the documentation from your department concerning 125 Bedford Street, map 29 lot 4186, the conservation department does have a wetland filing under DEP file SE 220 slash 731 with an order of conditions issued January 16th, 2001. The certificate of compliance for this was issued July 17th, 2008, but we don't have evidence that this was recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. The other filing we have for this property is under DEP file SE 220 slash 1064 with an order of conditions issued August 21st, 2008 and recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds September 11th, 2008. I would recommend if the work was done through this order of conditions, that a request for a certificate of compliance be filed with the conservation commission to close out the file. Concerning the zoning board of appeals petition, if there's any work proposed outside the existing fenced-in tower area, the conservation commission should be contacted to review this work as the tower area is within a 100-foot buffer zone to a bordering vegetated wetland as protected under Wetlands Protection Acts, MGL Chapter 131, Section 40 in Regulations 310, CMR 10, and CETA. If you have any further questions, don't hesitate to contact the conservation department at, by the way, 906-2406. I didn't know if you were aware of that.
I was just made aware of this just now when I walked in. The tower is owned by American Tower. If these permits were not closed out, we want us to make sure they're closed out before we move forward.
Would you like a copy of that one?
I actually got one, thank you.
You got one? Okay.
You have a copy of the letter from the building commissioner?
I do.
Okay. Everybody has a copy of that? Do you have any comments on it? Or maybe you haven't read it yet?
Oh, I actually did. No, I do not have any comments on it.
Okay. Anybody else with anything else on this? Anybody in the audience have any comments, questions regarding this tower, the change in the tower? If not, is there a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the petition of Elizabeth Ratauski on behalf of New Singular Wireless relative to her request to allow for the installation of 12 antennas, equipment, generator, and shelter to the existing wireless communication tower. The total, the subject property is located at 125 Bedford Street, Middleborough Assessors map 029 lot 4186 with the following stipulations. One, that in accordance with the letter from the conservation commission, the certificate of compliance be closed out prior to any additional work being done on the site. And two, it is clearly understood that the generator is only to be used during periods of time when there is a power outage on the site.
Second the motion. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Dorothy?
In favor.
Liz?
In favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
Votes five to nothing in favor. Granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is to hear the petition of George Costa, 46 Spruce Street, Middleborough, Mass, 02346, relative to his request to allow for intensive home occupation with producers high-end VMX, bicycle racing components, mainly CNC aluminum gearing. Subject property is located at 46 Spruce Street, Middleborough Assessors, map 101 lot 3835. Declare the hearing open. Floor is yours. You want to describe to us what you want to do in your words. We know what it says, just tell us what you want.
Yep. Basically, I'm looking to get a, be able to bring my business to my home location and build a commercial steel-style building on the property roughly 40 by 60. That's what I've proposed. And in order to do this, I have to file for, it seems like one of the areas that I can, I could do this under is the designation in the zoning laws for intensive home occupation.
Questions from the board?
I have quite a few questions. First of all, what exactly is the nature of the business?
The nature of the business is we make bicycle parts. So this is the primary example of?
So it's a manufacturing business?
Yes. But it's, it's a manufacturing business, but we currently have three employees, one CNC machine. We do a lot of shipping, stuff like that. We're producing roughly 8,000 of those things per year as it stands right now.
And there are no more than three employees?
No. No.
And there will never be no more than three employees?
No. No. Because we can, if production increases beyond our current capability right now, I can meet that demand by adding more than one CNC machine and one operator. I mean, there's CNC shops all around here that operators are running multiple rows of machines. So if I go to a second machine, you won't get 200% output capability, but we'll get probably 180% output capability. And that's a lot of stuff per year. I don't foresee the market being that big for me particularly, but if we had to add on an additional machine, have one person running three, that's not an issue. These cycle times for these parts are running about 15 minutes per part, so the operator literally will clamp a piece of material, hit the button, and go sit down at the computer and wait till it finishes. So that's basically what happens right now.
I hope you understand that the portion of the bylaw that you're asking us to approve sort of is designed for a relatively small enterprise. And I don't know, just the way you're talking, it seems to me that you're probably going to be a very successful businessman. And if you are a very successful businessman, you're going to have to move off of that site.
I've been doing this since 2006.
Well, I understand that. Well, you can do it, but not at a particular home location. That's the issue. Because many people go into business, obviously go into business, you want to make money, you want to be successful. If you're very successful and you have to expand and you have to do other kinds of things, you're not going to be able to do it here.
Oh, I understand that. And I am willing to meet that three-employee limit and I'm okay with it.
And you're going to have noise limits? And you're going to have hours of operation limits?
Yes.
And lots of other kinds of things that?
Yes.
You know, I'm just speaking for myself, not for my other colleagues behind the steps.
Yes, yeah. And the hours of operation, I listed in the documentation here would be eight to five. I would assume that that's, I don't see anything in the bylaws that restrict that.
I don't have an opinion on it. All I'm trying to suggest is you're talking about something to me that seems, at least at first blush, and you even used the word, "in intensive operation."
I didn't use that word.
If it's too intensive, this isn't a site for it.
I didn't use that word. That's the, that's the word from the zoning laws. If you look at that zoning definition, that's what it's called.
Well, I don't want to play word police with you. All I'm just trying to point out to you that if you do indeed get the approval of this board, your business will always be small.
I understand that.
At this place.
I understand that.
And I, you know.
Yes.
You're talking about building, you're talking about buying machinery, you're spending money. You might want to be very careful about where you put your business. That's all I'm saying.
I understand that. Yes.
Could you tell me how much noise one of these machines makes when it's producing that part?
It's not very loud. You can't even, you cannot hear the equipment running when the door is closed at the current location that we currently have, you know, outside the building. It's basically, if you know what like a drill press sounds like, it's a larger version of that. So.
Yeah, I would, I'm not sure how close the nearest home is to you, but I would not want them to be listening to the machines running.
No, I understand that. And I've, in part of doing this, I've gone around to all of my neighbors and especially my immediate next-door neighbor, they know what I do very well. And I asked for their support and basically they signed off on a piece of paper that I explained to them the nature of my business and what I'm trying to do. And every one of my certified abudders has signed off on it except for one lady who apparently lives in Rome, Italy, full-time, so I wasn't able to contact her.
Well, I guess she's not going to hear your machines running.
Yeah, probably.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Jeff?
Yes.
Through you to the petitioner. This photograph, is this a rendition of what's actually there or is this what you're proposing?
No, that photograph is a existing steel structure building located about 400 feet from my property. So that's an example of something that's in the neighborhood already in case there was a concern about placing a structure like that on a residential property.
Okay. My other question to you would be, you're only showing three parking spaces and I'm not sure that's going to be significant between employees and clients.
We don't have clients. The business is pretty much 100% online. I have a few major mail orders in the United States. We don't have a storefront, nobody comes in. I mean, basically, the only thing that, the only reason why someone will come to my business is UPS or like a material delivery and that's it. There's only three parking spaces. Originally, we had five on the first time around that we, that I talked to Tammy and I spoke with Bob about this prior, and we had the parking in the wrong location. And we reduced it down to three because of the engineer that did this thought that they needed three parking spaces plus handicap spots on top of that. But there's three employees, so we can't have more than that amount. If there is a handicap person who does work there, you know, one of those spots I guess will be designated as that.
Is there a place for the pickup trucks to turn around after they pick up new stuff?
I mean, currently, we get UPS deliveries at the home anyway, so that's pretty much what happens. Everything that we do is, like, all, when the product leaves, it's always US mail. We basically come down here to the post office with, you know, large and medium-sized flat rate boxes.
Okay, so there's no storefront, in other words?
There's no storefront, no. No.
So it's not a retail?
No. There's no requirement for signage. This is basically look exactly like that building that's right next to my house as it is, except for there would be people inside doing work.
Anybody else have a question? Have you reset your hours? What's your daily working hours going to be?
I described that in the documentation, in the application, Monday through Friday, eight to five.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience have any questions? Building Commissioner, any questions or comments?
Zoning Board of Appeal, January 6th, 2014. I reviewed the petition submitted by George Costa relative to his request to be allowed for an intensive home occupation in a residential neighborhood located at 46 Spruce Street. I offer the following. One, the site plan does not show where the septic system would be located or any landscape buffering for the proposed building. Two, the proposed building will be required to have two handicapped accessible bathrooms. Three, I am not in favor of placing the proposed commercial building in front of the residential dwelling. Could the commercial building be placed to the left of the existing residential dwelling? There is an attached map showing this. Four, how many employees will be employed by the company? Middleborough zoning bylaw states in Section 3.2.3.4 allows a maximum of three persons. Respectfully submitted, Robert J. Whelan, Building Commissioner.
I guess I?
Do you have a copy of that letter?
I just received it when I walked in and I did read it. Do you want me to respond to this?
Please.
Okay. So as far as item number one is concerned, when I spoke with my civil engineer regarding doing the layout of this, what he proposed was we do a generic description of where the building was going to go, because if I do not get this intensive home occupation permit, there's no reason for me to move forward with, you know, very advanced site plans and layouts. So should this permit be issued, we are going to basically create a septic design and adhere to all of the rules and regulations that I need to for a building of this size. Can I ask why two handicapped accessible bathrooms are required if the business only has three employees?
The building is not over 12,000 square feet, so it probably requires two bathrooms.
The building is not over 12,000 square feet. Forty by 60 is only 2,400.
2,400 square, only 1,200 square feet.
Is it 1,200 square feet or 12,000 square feet?
1,200.
1,200 square feet? You need two bathrooms inside? Okay, well, if that's something that's required, then we'll do that. But I would like to see, is that something you can cite as far as?
Massachusetts State Plumber Code.
Massachusetts State Plumber Code? It says 1,200? Okay. That's not an issue. Not in favor? Okay, so I'm not opposed to putting the building in that location either. The general layout of it right now, I guess, I mean, again, this was a very preliminary sketch that was done. I would have to speak with Darren and, because this is to, looking at this right now, it's to the left of where Leaching Field is exactly. So if that's something that could be done, that's actually a better location for me. So we could definitely do that. And the last one, item four was stated in the original documentation that I submitted with the application where there wouldn't be more than three employees. with the application, where there wouldn't be more than three employees.
Your question?
No, I was just gonna make a comment, and it's related to Mr. Whelan's letter and your response to it. This is essentially a residential neighborhood, and it's gonna stay residential in character. And the only way that this board can assure that it's residential in character is to see the plans, what this eventual building is going to look like, at least from the passing public's viewpoint, before you put it in play. So, your concept of, "Well, I'll get my permit, and then I'll draw up my plans, at least for this particular member of the board," isn't gonna work. I wanna see the plans first, what it looks like, and make sure it's in character with the existing neighborhood first. I don't want it to look like a commercial building. In fact, the general theme would be sort of like this, if somebody was driving down the street, they wouldn't even know you existed. The idea behind this bylaw, for the most part, is to accommodate small, independent contractors, not necessarily manufacturing, although that could conceivably fall into the same category. It might be, for example, an electrician, who's basically working on his own, he gets calls, he does his paperwork at home, he barks his truck in his yard, gets up in the morning, drives his truck to his work site, wherever, you know, the job happens to be, and does his work. This is a whole different kind of idea. Not necessarily prohibited, I don't say that.
No, I understand that. And from the language of the zoning...
The idea, it's got to be residential first.
Yes.
Okay.
I understand that. From the language of the zoning law, it states in there that manufacturer products are allowed.
Yes, I understand that.
Yeah.
But you're, you have to remember, you're asking this board, the people sitting behind this desk, for permission to do it. And very likely, if it's like any other permit that we approve, it's going to have a whole host of stipulations that make sure that it stays in character with the neighborhood and protects your neighbors in the future. Not just your existing neighbors, but future neighbors as well.
I understand.
Okay.
The, my particular property and the property immediately adjacent are two properties that are bordering, the rest of the neighborhood is general use zoning. And literally across the street from me is general use zoning. Had I been in that, had I bought a property on that side of the street, I would be, I wouldn't have to go through the intensive home occupation permitting. There are a lot of businesses in the general area, so that's why I feel, and there are a lot of structures like this in the general area, both in front of people's homes, on the side of people's homes, in back of people's homes. So, I feel like it's not ruining the character of the neighborhood whatsoever. I mean, my biggest, my biggest critic is...
I understand where you...
Sitting right there, which is my wife. And if it doesn't look good, she's not allowed.
Let's go to, we'll cut to the chase.
Yeah.
It's, you've got to meet what this board views as residential, okay? So, give us some plans, and we can adjust to that.
Okay, what type of plans are you asking for?
Whatever it's gonna be built as, you're gonna have to make some plans to build it, right? It's gonna be a structure, it's gonna have doors, windows, facade, whatever. Bathrooms? We wanna see the plans.
Okay.
And then, if you get down, we also wanna see something on landscaping. I wanna see what it's gonna look like, so that when the passing public goes by, literally, they think it's a residential zone.
Okay.
Okay?
You should also indicate, you're saying you are going to have three parking spaces. You should also give us the dimensions of the parking space, as well as how do you get from the parking space to the road, as it were, the driveway? Now, you may say, "Well, there's an existing driveway." But I looked at the map, and I had a great deal of confusion at what I was looking at, understanding how the cars got there, where the driveway was, where the building was proposed, and where Mr. Whelan wanted it to be. Where is the existing building? I'm not quite sure from what I was looking at.
Are you, are you speaking in reference to Mr. Whelan's drawing, or mine, or your own?
Excuse me, let me just finish.
Okay.
When you come before us, you never want us to be confused.
Okay.
You want us to have all the facts laid out before us. We have a lot of experience, we've done this a long time, and we can easily say, "Okay, we have da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da." Guess we can understand. And then, we can ask. I may not know exactly what a CNC machine is, but I have dealt with other intensive home businesses. Give us the most information, give us more information than you think we need, and we'll be very happy.
Mr. Chair?
We'll have no problems.
Yes, Deb?
I have no problem with a space metal building. In fact, the more you make it look like a barn, probably the better off you'll be. It's just a suggestion. Just propose to us what you wanna put up, and if you can find out if you can put it back next to the house, or actually behind the house. It's gonna create an issue for putting in a bigger driveway for you, I'm sure, but...
I don't believe that behind the house is an option, because there's that...
Okay, well, I don't know, I don't know the particulars for your piece of property. I'm seeing some elevation issues here, but other than that, if we can meet the building inspector's request, that'd be great. If there's a reason why we can't, then just tell us what the issues are.
I do believe we can do what Bob presented.
That's fine. I, you know, we can rearrange it so your parking is in a different spot, if it has to be. You need the three spaces. But we would like to see the layout of the building. It's very difficult for us to approve something and not know what it's gonna look like.
Okay.
Because once we give you permission to do it, then it's out of our hands.
Okay.
And we don't like to do that. We like to know what we're approving.
I guess I'm confused about what this permit actually is regarding, because I understand that I have to go, like, after this stage, it would be conservation, after that stage, it would be health, and then the final stage, I believe, would be building.
Building permit, yeah.
Which, I would assume the building department would be very concerned about the layout, the structure, and all of that stuff.
Where you're asking for a special permit.
Yeah.
You're asking to get permission to do this. That's where we come in. And so, it's an extra layer. And yes, we can ask things that may not necessarily be required under a normal building permit.
Okay.
But our job is to protect the neighborhood from you, and from you from yourself, in that sense, that we're trying to keep things, it's not normally allowed, but you can do it under a special permit. Middleborough has a history of doing these type of things. We've got a lot of, you know, South Middleborough villages, these type of things, where there are a lot of owner-operator type contractors who have garages in the backyard, and are basically servicing their customers from whatever inventory they can, they can buy for themselves in that type of place. And I don't think anybody here on the board is against any of that, so, but we do like to know what we're approving. So, you know, in the same sense as that my colleague on the other end of the board here said, "Give us the information, we're looking for it, makes it easier." If you make us fight you for the information, then it becomes difficult to do.
I would provide all...
In those situations, it's easier to say no than to try and speculate.
Yeah, I mean, had I known that I had to provide, you know, a very detailed plan like that, I would've, I would've done that before we came to this meeting.
Well, no, that's all right. You know, sometimes...
Yeah.
It is what it is. But other than that, I don't, I don't necessarily see a problem with what you're proposing. I'm pretty familiar with the type of business that you have, so I don't think a noise is gonna be an issue. But you wanna keep that in mind when you build a building too. Insulation, that type of stuff. Other than that, I guess we're looking at probably continuance until we get some more information.
Anybody else, anyone else you wanna say? This point? I'll tell you how I feel. I basically, at the first glance of this, said, "No, it doesn't belong there." And if that's all I had to go on, I would say no. If you can make it so that it doesn't look like a commercial, ongoing commercial project, puts more in keeping with, I don't care what's on the other side of Spruce Street, that's a different zone. On this side of Spruce Street, it's gotta, can't look like it's commercial. It's gotta look like it fits into a residential area, including hours of parking, everything. Then I would consider it. If it doesn't, I wouldn't consider it.
Okay.
So, I'm telling you that, exactly how I feel. My first inclination is no. Also, I don't know whether you realize it or not, but you have to get at least four votes out of this board when you come back.
I didn't know that, yeah.
So, it could go down, but only two are bolstered. But that's the way the law is written. So, do everything you can to make it look, act, appear to be residential. Then you stand a much better chance.
Okay.
And you're not the first person that's walked in here and doesn't know what's required.
Okay.
So, don't think we're approaching...
Is there anyone I could talk to for advice on what I should be bringing back specifically? Because I'm not, I don't know if you want, like, an artist rendition of something, if you want structural plans, contacting a company that's gonna construct it?
Essentially, what we want to do is, we want everything on a piece of paper. So, you show us a plan, you know, kinda like the various facades, front, backsides, various elevations, et cetera, and we're gonna, if we decide to approve it, we're going to approve it and say, "Build it exactly like the plan." Also, give us a landscape plan. You don't have to get a landscape architect. You can, you can kinda draw it up yourself, but try to make it as neat as you can, and whatever you're going to have, you probably have existing landscaping and existing vegetation now. Include that, anything else, and it's on the plan. And then, we'll approve the plan, the way it looks. Any lighting, any signage. We didn't even talk about signage, right?
It doesn't need a, I have no plans for signage.
If you have no plans for signage, that's even better.
But you need to say, no signage.
But if you tell us all of these things, it's very simple for the board to say, "Oh." Right? We approve it, and it'll eventually look like this. And in the future, it will look like this, 'cause those things will be on record, and that's how we maintain the residential character of the neighborhood, even though, as you're describing your business, it's literally a commercial enterprise within a residential dwelling.
And if you're looking for help, Tammy is a great source.
No, I assume that the pictures and everything were okay until he started.
I work with Tammy quite a bit on this, and, I mean, and...
Sorry about that. Opened my mouth, inserted my foot.
The pictures here are fine, but what you might wanna do is, if you've got a manufacturer in mind, get a rendition of the building from them.
Yeah.
In other words, we don't want you to come in and say, "I wanna, I wanna build something like this." Because I want you to, we want it to come in on a, on a piece of paper, like, where you've got the proposed building is fine, then show us pictures of exactly what you're gonna build. What's the layout of the building gonna look like? What is your manufacturing floor, where are the bathrooms gonna be? Because we're gonna, that's gonna be what you're gonna have to live with, once we approve that. Even though you're gonna go to the building inspector, and you're gonna propose all your same thing, he's gonna say, "Okay, well, this is what you proposed to the board, this is what you gotta build." It's a way for, it's a check and balance system for everybody involved. That way, he knows what he's looking at. He's like, "Okay, the board approved this, that's what you gotta build." If you come in vaguely like this, and we approve something vaguely like this, you could build something completely different, and we'd all be going, "We never approved that." And you're gonna go say, "Yeah, you did, I got the piece of paper right here."
Yeah, I, I totally understand.
So, that's all. You know, if we, if, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it, but like I said, I'm not a professional as far as designing stuff and this, that, and the other thing. But as far as a presentation, if you've got a company in mind that's gonna build a building for you, and they've got a spec 40 by 60, it'd be real easy to get a brochure from them. You can get the layout, the floor layout, figure out with your engineer where it's gonna go, put it in there, and then we can basically say, "Okay, whatever has, whatever the layout has to change to be, to where the parking's going to be, obviously has to be contiguous with where the building's gonna be." So, that's gonna have to be, you're gonna have some drawing to do as far as that goes.
And if you get a, if you have a building, a pre-set place in mind, there won't be the problem with the bathrooms, the bathrooms should be included, 'cause they know what they're required to have.
I mean, location of that stuff, is it really gonna bear on where your septic system's gonna end up in the piping and how that's gonna work out?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all. But other than that, it's really not, I get the feeling you're feeling like it's really complicated, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's as bad as you think it is.
My only feeling is, I feel like I'm gonna finalize a building plan, but I still have to go through the building department to do that.
You do.
I'm sure there's gonna be changes there also. So, that's my only confusion.
There's not gonna be substantial, when you leave this board, there's not gonna be substantial changes in that plan.
Okay.
I can tell you that right now.
Okay.
That's why we want to approve.
So, whatever you come back with, is what we're gonna, 'cause we're gonna tie whatever permit we write to a physical piece of paper that's time-dated and stamped. It's gonna be stamped by the engineer, and that's what we're gonna, we're all gonna live by that.
Okay.
That's, that's the idea of the process.
Any comments? You heard what everybody said. Get your work cut out.
Do, how does this continuance work? Do I come back when everything's done?
How much time do you think you need?
Honestly, I don't know. I mean, I have to go back to my engineer and talk to him about this meeting, and...
A month?
I think it would be more than that, to be honest. I mean, I have to go get, I have to...
Two months? The reason I'm saying this is, we'll continue this hearing.
Okay.
To a date.
Yeah.
And then, we'll start over again at that time.
And...
As to what you presented to us or anything else.
What if I don't have anything ready within two months, because somebody else wrote the ball?
You just call the office and say you wanna continue it to a further date.
Okay, that's, that's okay to do?
Yeah, it's not gonna be, no, we'll do it.
All right, then that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Is two months reasonable?
Two months is a good starting point right now, yeah. I would say so. And if I can get in within that, I'll, I guess I'll let Tammy know?
Yep.
No, you'll come back at the two months.
I'll come back at the two months.
Whatever date we set at two months.
So, we're looking at March 13th or the 27th?
There's, there's no, there's no particular pressure to come up with a certain date. We're gonna accommodate whatever you think is the time, timeframe. We're not going anywhere.
Yeah.
We'll be here. So, when, whenever you think you can get it done, you're welcome to come back.
Okay.
And the reason we need...
I only say that because I leave about 15 to 16 weekends a year for this business. Like, I postponed a flight that I'm leaving for Reno, Nevada, till tomorrow morning, 'cause that's the start of our season.
Well, we saved you some money.
No, not really. There's a bunch of stuff going on, and I just have to work around that. And if the 13th could be a weekend I'm gone, the 27th I could be around, so that would be great. If I could just look for two seconds, I'll be able to tell you. Is there anything else I should prepare or bring for this next meeting? Just a revised plan?
We need plans.
Yeah.
We need plans. And incidentally, the reason we need to know a date is, we have to post these things for the, for the public, right? We just can't call a meeting any old time and say this is, the agenda's ahead of time. So, anybody who wants to comment on it can come.
What were the two dates?
March 13th or the March 27th?
March 27th, please. I'll be in Phoenix on the 13th, so...
I wish.
Huh?
I wish I did.
It is very nice there.
I'm getting old, Mr. Chairman.
Is your motion meant to continue this to the 27th of March?
No, I think...
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Mr. Gray going?
In favor.
Yes, sir. You're in favor?
In favor.
I'm in favor.
You're in favor?
I'm in favor.
You're in favor?
I'm in favor.
Let's not answer it until the 27th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next petition is to hear the petition of Betty Davis of 34 Fabio Street, Middleborough, Next petition is to hear the petition of Betty Davis of thirty-four Fairview Street, Middleborough, Mass. oh-two-three-four-six, relative request to allow for the use of the existing garage to be used as a cat boarding business. Subject property is located at thirty-four Fairview Street, Middleborough, SS map zero-five-nine lot four-one-two-three. Declare the hearing open. We have two letters. One from Abutter, and one from Mr. Whalen. One from Mr. Whalen. I view the petition submitted by Betty Davis relative request to allow for the intensive home occupation in residential neighborhood located at thirty-four Fairview Street. Offer the following: The existing residential garage would be renovated for the proposed business. Ms. Davis has no employees. She would meet the requirements of the Middleborough zoning bylaws six-two-point-two-point-three for intensive occupation. Signed by Mr. Whalen. We then have a letter without a name from a Fairview Street Abutter. There are ample business and commercial zones established in town to accommodate this business. This is a residential neighborhood. We are allowing the use of this property for the purpose to represent something different in quality, character, and degree to present of present use, being both different in kind and in effect on the neighborhood in a negative way. I would make, it would make it a non-conforming to existing zoning and detrimental to the intent of the established residential zoning. Allowing business in this residential neighborhood would without question substantially alter, in a detrimental way, the existing nature of the residential setting. The next one. Most businesses like to grow, with the intention, with the initial intent maybe your cats. It would open the door to boarding of small, of other small animals as well. Next one. In and out traffic would be concerned, sadly, to the disposal of waste generated from boarding. The last one. Once established, this does not seem to be any view, any review or monitoring of the business in the residential neighborhoods would allow approval of the special permits. Just looking across the street, a junk disposal business operating at thirty-five A Fairview Street for flagrant violation of your zoning bylaw, a special permit issued for that property which has gone on for over ten years without intervention from your board. Signed by the Fairview Street Abutter.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment about that letter? I understand the concerns that this signatory who claims to be a Fairview Street Abutter has, but I'm always a little skeptical of anything where someone doesn't sign their name.
I would have to agree.
I agree.
I agree too.
But she sent it to us, so therefore I read it.
No, I, no problem with me reading it.
That's right. Take it for what it's worth. Yes.
I appreciate, I'm in.
Okay, I assume that.
And I appreciate knowing that someone has serious concerns.
Okay, tell us what you would like to do.
I would like to reopen my business. I operated this business for eighteen years in Plimpton. I would like to reopen the business in the existing garage that will be completely renovated. Some of the renovation work has already started, the outside, the siding, the windows. This is Mark Wakus, who is my builder. And so we have just begun doing windows and doors and, and simple things like that. So I would like to be able, it's luxury cat boarding, cats only. It's always been cats only. And I believe the animal inspector, Jessica, was going to send you a letter. You must not have gotten it today.
No, we didn't.
Oh, you did? Okay, because she visited me this morning. And she has talked to the animal control officer from Plimpton, where I lived for twenty-one years and operated the business for eighteen. It's very quiet. It's very... Can I approach?
Sure. I brought some brochures from all, these are all brochures, obviously, they would have to be repainted. But they, if there isn't an outside picture, unfortunately. But this is what the suites look like where one family of cats would stay. That could be one cat, or it could be three. You know, depending on how many cats are in a family. And then this is a, there won't be this many suites in the existing category. It just, I mean, in the proposed category. This just gives you an idea of, these you can pass them around. Just gives you an idea of what everything looked like in Plimpton. And it will look, on the inside, it will look exactly the same. The suites will be exactly the same.
They won't be as many as they were in Plimpton. And as far as the character of the neighborhood, the garage is existing. It now has windows in place of siding, and all the siding is being redone. But there are, there are many windows. How many windows are there, Mark?
There's seven new windows right now.
Seven new windows, and there are still two to go in where the existing garage doors are. If anything, it would add to the character of the neighborhood and keep it very residential. I don't, my signage has always been a stenciled mailbox at the end of my driveway that has Three Kitty Stenciled on it, and it says, "Welcome to the Cat's Cradle." And that's always been all of what my signage was. Waste material is, the boxes are scooped every day. The used litter is put into sealed plastic bags and put into a, you know, a regular trash, a garbage container. And I have Plymouth Rock rubbish removal that is doing the private removal service. What else can I, I don't think very quick on my feet, I'm sorry.
I think you're doing fine.
Oh, thank you. Parking, I do, there's a sufficient driveway there, and it's a, the house is a ranch. And when you come in from Fairview Street, if the street is here, you come into the, towards the garage in the driveway, and then I turn my car to the left to go around the back of the ranch. There's ample off-street parking. The most, the very most cars that could be there at a time would be three, and that's on a rare occasion. A person comes, my hours are very restricted. My people hours, as I call them, from ten-thirty to two. Every day but Sunday, and on Sundays, it's at four o'clock. It's just, it's an appointment time. So the parking, a cat owner might be there for five to ten minutes as we settle the kitty in, get what needs to be done for records and, and that kind of thing, for me to get all the information that I need about the cat, and its vaccines, and its food, and all of that kind of stuff. And then the person leaves, and is usually gone from anywhere from three days to a month. So they don't come back again until they pick up their kitty. It's not like it's a, it's a constant revolving door and a, you know, constant, you know, a big increase in traffic and a lot of traffic on the street and on the, causing problems. There's obviously no noise factor. Kiddies don't bark, you know?
Gary, do you have a question?
Nope. Your maximum number of cats was gonna be twenty-eight?
That's an approximation, yeah. I, it would be hard, given the number of suites that I'm gonna have, it would be very hard to have more than that.
Okay, what, the reason I wanna know is whatever number you're gonna come up with is what we're gonna tie the permit to.
Okay.
So you would have, whatever the maximum's going to be, would be what you'd be maximally allowed to have at any time.
Okay.
So if twenty-eight works for you?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight works.
Okay.
Yeah. Actually, just to give myself safety, let's say an even thirty.
Along that line, do you have cats of your own?
I do.
And so if we had twenty-eight or thirty?
Those would be in the garage.
How many, yeah, but how many overall cats would be on the property at any one time?
I have three house cats of my own. So on the property, there would be...
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, but in two separate buildings.
Well, I understand that, but, well, if and when we approve something, we want to make sure we can kinda sort out who cats belong to.
Absolutely.
If you sort of, now, I can't remember where we had, somebody applied for a permit for housing cats, but I know when we get kennel permits with the dogs, right, it's always an issue, is that dog being boarded here, or is it the owner's dog?
I see.
So that's why we're interested in the number. And that makes it real simple for anybody who may have to supervise whatever you're doing, particularly the animal control officer. They know the total number. That's what, that's what Mr. DeGrazi is getting at.
Okay. Yeah.
So if we said twenty-seven, and you have three in the house, there's your thirty.
Okay.
And that's what we would put the permit to.
Okay, then that would be sufficient.
Okay. The other thing is, oh, I'm sorry.
The three are her personal cats.
That's right.
Well, she can have as many personal cats as she wants. It's the thirty, the number that are going in the garage.
Yes.
That's a concern of it.
Yes. Unfortunately, you can't regulate that part of it. It gets us to be a sticky wicket.
Yeah.
It gets sticky.
Because the ones in the house can roam the yard. They can go anywhere, like cats do.
Yep. Actually, they don't go out.
For the purposes of the permit, for allowing the function of the, what do you call it, a cat sanctuary or a...
The cattery.
Cattery, okay. First time I've heard the term, so. Is thirty gonna be the number that'll work for you?
I, I believe that that will, yes. I can't imagine going...
That's what, and that's what we'll...
I put a lot of thought into that number before I, before we brought you the answers to the questions that...
Kennel licenses work a little differently, because they're structured different points.
Sure.
You've got personal use, you've got in commercial, so you can have up to, so we limit that.
Okay.
So we're gonna, on this special permit, we're gonna limit the amount of cats you can have to thirty, if everyone on the board agrees with that.
Okay.
And we will, that's what you'll be tied to. So if ever the animal control officer were to come and inspect and find in excess of that, then you'd be in violation of your permit.
Okay. And what would happen to me? I don't, I honestly don't know.
Well, you know, there's all kinds of things that can happen. Building enforcement officer, which is the building inspector, would probably pay you a visit
Okay.
and say you were in violation of your permit.
Okay.
And there's lots of things that could happen.
All right.
We wanna make sure that you, if you've given yourself enough room to operate, and obviously, cats don't need a huge amount of space.
Actually, more than you think, to be happy and content and not stressed.
Well, that's part of, that's why you're in the business of doing that. I don't know much about cats.
They utilize vertical space far better than they utilize horizontal space.
Absolutely.
Which is why the suites are designed in the manner that they are.
But I'm sure as part of any inspection process that you'll work with, with the animal control officer, that I'm sure they have a means by which to determine how much space is required.
Yes. Yeah. Well, traditional boarding is a two-foot square page.
I understand.
And the, these suites are seven feet tall, or they're gonna be a little over seven feet. Three and a half feet wide and three fifty.
They, they, you know, these pictures look great. I'm sure cats would be very happy to be in that space.
They always have been in the past. I can only speak for the past.
Is this the layout?
No, I, I was just...
Yes.
I'm sorry, no, no.
Go ahead. This is a plan here capable of supporting the thirty cats?
Yes.
This plan here?
Yeah, yeah. There are three private rooms. This, the census, or the number of animals, the number of cats that are in the building, it makes a big difference how many cats are in each family. Some families have two or three cats. Most families have one. So, but then there's the unusual family. Right before I moved from Plimpton, in last fall, I had a woman who had six cats.
Wow.
And we split them between two, three, between two suites, three and three. And so obviously, that would drive the, that would drive the number up very quickly just from one owner. So that's why I would not plan on keeping thirty cats in the footprint that you're looking at as a constant.
No, but there are situations where you may end up with that many.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. I just wanted to go back to your hours of operation, because you wrote us a little note, and it was very nice, but you use this language approximately eight AM, right, to six PM. We would like to be a little bit more precise and know exactly what the times would be.
Okay. I am always, that's difficult. My people business hours.
What would be the earliest you would open, potentially?
For, for people, or to take care of the cats?
For people.
For people, ten thirty.
People arriving with, delivering a cat for your care?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty, okay, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
AM till two PM.
So...
Essentially, I think that's what she means by her hours of operation. I think the other part is personally just being in there, taking care of the cats.
Is taking care of the cats.
That's what I was kind of trying to ask.
Feeding them, cleaning them, exactly.
Okay.
Nobody else would be there. That's just...
I'm not worried about you being on the premises. I'm kind of trying to get a sense of people arriving to deliver their animal, right?
Ten thirty to two, unless it was a special arrangement.
Yeah.
And that's not all that common.
That's kinda what I wanna know. What are the, what are the hours when these people are coming? Is that the ten thirty to two?
Yep.
Stuff?
And that's steadfast.
And Sundays at four PM only?
Yep, it's an appointment time of four PM.
So if it's at three-thirty, they don't come?
They can, but I won't give them their cat. Yes, I will. But I strongly discourage it.
You know, a guy setting his clock, I gotta be there exactly at four o'clock.
Well, a few, a couple of minutes either way, I'm not gonna get.
Gonna wait another whole week?
What if you have someone who works and can come?
Right. Then I would make a special arrangement. Like I said, they do happen, they're not that common. But they do happen. Most people pick up their kitties when they get back from vacation, usually the same day that they get back. Because they're anxious to have their pet back, so... It is a possibility that somebody might pick up a cat after six. It's, I can't say that it never happens, but it doesn't happen that commonly.
You don't encourage it?
No, I don't, exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Yes, sir. I just need to name a, and you gotta speak into the microphone, okay? You're on TV.
Why, I can't hope for that.
Steve Ramsey, Dona Drive in Middleborough. My question, I guess, would first is, has it, is this gonna be, is this a yes-no tonight? Will this be accepted or denied tonight?
Most likely will be.
Okay, right, so for you to accept or deny this, is there anybody you would ordinarily consult with from the previous town?
No, the only person we would consult with is the animal control officer.
So nobody would look into a previous record of any sort, anywhere?
Well, their letter says that she contacted the town of Plimpton.
Who contacted them?
The animal control officer contacted the animal inspector in town of Plimpton, confirmed that there have been no complaints, and that she's been in good stead.
You know, I'm, I'm just, I don't live near this neighborhood. I'm a contractor, and it's a little awkward. I certainly appreciate everybody. We all have to make a living and... We all have to make a living and couldn't, I give everybody the blessing. God bless you for hard work and all that. Unfortunately, I'm in a very awkward position here. I don't, um, not in a butter of yours, um, and I certainly don't, you know, I feel like this is a, I don't want it to be personal. I'm just, unfortunately, I have a firsthand experience with this, I'm the contractor that's, um, renovating the property that this came from. And if I live next door, if you saw the condition of the property... I'm sorry, I don't have the words.
You mean where the previous cat care place was?
Yes. And I feel bad saying it, but I'm just here. I looked at it before I came, I said to myself, you know, my wife didn't want me to come here. She said, "Mind your own business." For whatever reason, we all want to mind our own business all the time, it's easier and all of that. But I said to myself, which I try to do all the time, is if I live next door to this, or if I knew, if I knew what I know, and then something, this business starts there, and then five or 10 years down the road, it ends up the way it did where I saw this other one, and that person found out that I knew, I don't think they'd like me very much. So I'm here to just state facts. I apologize almost, but the two buildings that were on that property were beyond words. I'm the contractor, we're trying to save the house. We've gutted it down to the strip two-by-fours, and I hate to say it, ain't doing it. It's got to go.
That was not, we're not talking about the cattery building. We're talking about the house building.
We're talking both. Both. The plaster we, which I couldn't believe, I said, "There's no way the plaster would have to come off the wall," and the insulation removed. But the, it's, the homeowner took the insulation after we took the plaster off, put it in a plastic bag, and the odor was in it. And I, you know, I feel like I'm, I hate to badmouth things, but I'm just telling you facts. I'm here to state facts. So I would, in my estimation, you know, and I know you people put in a lot of hours and all that, um, I would think that in a case when it comes to animals, that it should be investigated a little bit further. You know, I don't know if I'm out of line by saying that, I, but if, I think, I, let me ask you people to make a comment. Do you think I am out of line by even asking that question?
No, you can say what you want.
Say what you wish.
No, but I, I understand that I can say what I wish.
As long as your wife will put you back in the house.
Well, you never know.
No, I, I'd like to thank you for coming in and, and making a comment along that line, but I'd also like to ask you a couple of questions. Uh, first, was this property you're talking about in the town of Middleborough?
No, Plimpton, just where she said she came.
Oh, okay. The only reason I say that is, uh, we're very familiar with the work of our animal control officer, and she's very competent.
Mm-hmm. I, and I apologize if I state the...
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, that's, that's the first response, comment I want.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, the second is, many times people have pets, cats, dogs, whatever, right? And they really don't have permits for them or licenses or whatever else, uh, is required from either the municipality or state law or all of those things, and they're not supervised. Rightly or wrongly, this individual who's petitioning before us this evening, um, is doing it the way it's supposed to be done. She's asking permission ahead of time, we may or may not grant it, uh, but if we do grant it, we're also going to be sure that there's some enforcement of the basic rules that go along with whatever she did. Now, I don't know whether you hear from the previous hearing, that's the reason we want everything spelled out exactly, so that if there is a problem with cats, in the past we've had them with dogs, uh, we have some ammunition to literally chase after that person. And it usually ends up in some kind of a court case and costs them a ton of money. So there are provisions to control these things if it's done properly. So I, I, I'm not, I don't know the circumstance in this other town, but...
I don't doubt that that's the case. I, I'm sure there is. I've never doubted that that's the case. You know, I've lived in this town, and I'm very happy with this town and how all things are. I have a great relationship with Bob, I have a great li- police fire department. I can't say enough about this town. I wouldn't be here. I've been here 30 years. I love living here. Everybody here has been terrific. Obviously, there's always an exception to that rule. None of us are perfect.
Sure.
Um, and I commend all of those people, as well as I do you. I, I think I stated that. I meant, if I didn't, I, that's how I meant it to come out. I understand that. But my only reason for being here, and I would ask you if, can I ask you directly?
Sure.
If this was you, and you were, if you were me, and you witnessed what I witnessed, would you...
I think, I think you've made, uh, a good choice by appearing this evening, and I commend you for that.
Well, I'm not looking for commendations. I just want, um, in my opinion, something to do with animals. We all love animals. Um, I wouldn't live in Middleborough if it wasn't for the open space and the animals. I would not have been here, that's for sure. I've had numerous animals. Um, but if they're mismanaged or not managed properly, it's not only a detriment to the animal itself, but it certainly can become one to the neighbor. Now, I don't even know this neighborhood. I don't know how, how close the house is next door. I don't know whether it's five feet or if it's 500 feet, I have no idea. But my only reason for coming here, in a clear conscience, I could not not come here. And I guess that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Good luck when you go home.
I have a very interesting...
Good.
Because I, I might just add that the, um, animal control officer will have supervision over the place where the cats are boarded...
Yes.
But not the home. So in terms of your experience, um...
And that, she is welcome to commend.
The house itself isn't, um, a place where the animal control officer will be able to ensure any regulations.
Actually, the animal control officer has jurisdiction. Anywhere there would be a animal and where she had reasonable to believe that there was an issue.
In, in your own home with your pets?
Oh, yes.
Just because you didn't keep them clean?
If, if you're not keeping them in, in a healthy manner, and she has reasonable suspicion to believe that...
So she would come into the home?
She can come. She may have, she may, she may be accompanied by somebody else who has a little more authority.
With a warrant?
I don't believe she needs a warrant technically in a situation like that.
I don't know.
If she believes animals, welfare is in jeopardy. There are, it's, it's very liberal as far as that goes, with a jurisdictional control.
Questions? Comments? Anybody else in the audience saying what they'd like to say?
Mr. Chair.
One way or the other, go ahead.
Through you to the petitioner, would you like to respond to the comments that were made?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just drifted over.
From the gentleman that was just spoken?
I'm, um, I'm speechless at the moment. Um, I would not have the customer base that I have, um, which is substantial. Had there been poor management of the animals, um, animals that weren't, you know, cats that weren't cared for properly, there is, um, a- as far as the building that, that the cats were boarded in, it is a given that every now and then there is going to be a cat that pees outside his litter box, I'm sorry, I didn't choose that word, um, urinates outside the litter box. Um, we, we keep, uh, you know, we have, we have special, um, routines for that. Over 18 years, it is possible that the, that the four mica on the suites will live...
I would have no doubt that if you had had a business for 18 years with animals in it, that the building would probably have odors of animals...
But walking into it...
Between pet dander and anything, and those type of things. I don't know what the gentleman witnessed. I have, I have...
He didn't witness animal care.
I have no, I have no way of basing an opinion on what he saw.
He didn't witness animal care.
For my own, for myself. I don't know.
Right.
Um, having been around animals most of my life, uh, having worked in barns and different places like that, um, from a contractor's perspective, if you walked into a barn, yeah, it's not the ideal. Um, so I, I don't know what he saw and how he's interpreting what he saw. And he could be very, I, I take the gentleman at his word for what he saw...
Mm-hmm.
But I have, you know, there's no context to it from my perspective. You, you've told me what you saw, but I can't see what you saw, and I don't, I don't have a pers- I, there's no context to the comments.
Why, Dave, you should be a referee.
They don't pay me enough, um, to have to investigate.
I have an actual, I know I'm on...
Okay, and that's, and that, absolutely, I'm...
Frank Bush, the ACO.
We passed a letter from the local, um, animal control office, so we have an entire record.
Okay.
The animal control officer is welcome...
That's fine.
Whenever she...
You don't, you don't have to respond to the comments. I just, I was just curious if you were interested in doing so. Like I said, I don't, I don't know what your house looked like or what the business, there's no picture of the exterior of the building.
The, the business looked, oh, it looked like a, um, a small ranch, a 38, a 30, help me out, uh...
28, 26.
28 by 34...
Or 36.
Ranch that had, um, double-hung windows, um, a utility room off the side that had the furnace in it, an outside oil tank, and the windows had shutters on them. It looked like a quaint ranch, a little ranch. And evidently, I, I'm, I'm assuming that I, I, there were never complaints about odor in the building when you walked in. They're, they're scooped. The litter boxes are cleaned every single day. Everything is vacuumed, everything is, but as you said, over 18 years...
Darren, Karen.
I'm shocked. I, I just...
You do realize that you are going to wake up at 3:00 in the morning, sit up in bed and say, "I should have said..."
Right, of course, of course. That, that's, that would be me.
Okay, we have a, a question that's been brought up before us that none of us, including the petitioner, can really clarify at this point. So at the suggestion of Tammy that she contact the, uh, Plimpton Animal Control and make sure that we have something in our record, is one way or the other, whatever it's, whatever he says.
Right. You, um, I, I apologize if this is out of order. You do know that Jessica talked to him?
Yep.
Yeah, we have a letter saying that.
The ACO talked to, yeah, your ACO talked to him.
Yep. And we'll double talk.
Okay. That's, that's perfectly fine with me.
Okay. Now, based on that, we have to wait for that to come back, the board agrees with this, and that we continue this one until the 23rd. Is that reasonable for everybody?
I don't have a problem with it.
That's fine with me, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to do that?
I assume so.
Second.
Motion made, second, and continue this hearing until the 23rd.
In favor?
In favor?
In favor.
I'm in favor.
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 Everybody's in favor, okay? So we'll bring it in on the 23rd, come back.
This will be lightning.
Okay.
Okay?
I will do that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think a motion will adjourn at, uh, seven minutes before 9:00.
That's all? One second. What's that? Motion made, second, and it will adjourn.
I agree with that.
Everybody, okay? You're now off the panel.